The time is now six thirty. Welcome to the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education meeting for March twentieth. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertised this meeting on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. These notices were sent to the municipal clerks of the borough of Madawan, the township of Aberdeen, and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. These notices were also placed on the district website. May we please stand for the board?
Let us be grateful to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Scully, Ms. Giles, Mr. Reverend, Ms. Powell, Mr. Montone, Ms. Scott, Ms. Brown, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Orange. Be it resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and legal services. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public from the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of executive session is estimated to be thirty minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will take place. Can I have a motion and a second to enter executive session?
A motion.
We are in a scheduled executive session. Back in session for the legislative hall. Can I have a motion and a second to accept correspondence to the board?
A motion.
Do we have superintendents' reports for us?
Good evening and happy spring, if doesn't feel like it. I just have a brief update because as we're going through the budget process, we've been recording out at a board meeting what our budget process looks like and how it started from. I feel like we started school, opened up school, and then went into budgets. We started, we started back in the vault. So there has been some, on the agenda tonight, there's a tentative budget for submission to the county is up for approval from the board. In addition to that, we were recently, counties and school districts were recently noticed, notified of a tax incentive program. So I'm just going to share a little bit of information because we, as we go throughout the process, it's important for us all to be whole and with this process so the community knows and the board is well aware as well. So the tax incentive program for public schools allows districts that are facing under adequacy funding to apply for an increased inner tax levy for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This one-time initiative provides an opportunity for districts to secure additional funding, to enhance durability, to deliver a thorough and efficient education. Under the program, the state will also contribute fifty thousand dollars for every million dollars raised for the increased tax levy. So this actually, within a week, we were told that there were three hundred districts that were eligible to apply for the program. There are twenty districts in Monmouth County which include many of our neighboring towns. The state has allotted twenty million dollars for the program. We were recently notified that our district is eligible to apply due to being under, due to being under adequacy funds. We are waiting for the official application. We think that it'll be within the week, however, we're waiting and as I think we all know that a lot of times we wait and wait for things to roll out and applications to roll out. I do not have any further details in terms of what the application is going to look like. What we do know is that the application and the funds are to be utilized to ensure that we are providing and delivering a thorough and efficient education. So essentially what that means is that the funds can be used for some of the areas that we are finding that we're struggling with in terms of budgets. So that could be transportation, special education, instructional programs and services, and professional. So if you have any questions. In addition to that, I did find a line item in Governor Murphy's detailed funds budget where Keys will be funded, not fully funded, but they will receive an allocation for the upcoming school year as well. I'll be able to provide more information as I have a call out to the senator to find out how much it was.
So Keys Academy is our recovery high school program, it's only one of three in the state, and it gives students who are in recovery a way to graduate from this school. I would like Ms. Case or Mrs. Scherer to explain what under adequacy means because it sounds like a bad thing, but it's not necessarily a bad thing.
Sure, so I'm going to take a step back to explain it. So the state gave formula, there was a couple of changes this year made to it. With that being said, everything is a weighted average within the state formula. Being that weighted average, it used to be that it would be census status, so a ten-year look back. This was the first year that we were funded for special ed categorical based off of our October fifteenth snapshot. So that would be our current enrollment instead of ten-year old data. And then the other thing, the other difference in it is that they don't have local fair share and then we'll go into under adequacy or over adequacy. So the state determines, again, what we should be spending on our budget and it used to be old data. And now they're doing a three-year average on that data and so that data is based off of property and wealth of all the towns. And so with that being said, if they decide the state has a weighted formula, if it tells us, hey, your whole budget, you should be spending a hundred dollars. If you spend ninety dollars instead of a hundred, then they're going to say you're ten dollars under adequacy. And if you actually spend a hundred and ten dollars, then they're going to say you are ten dollars over adequacy. So before the formula change, our district was over adequacy, but now our district has changed our wealth indicators and we are considered under adequacy by just shy of six hundred dollars with their new formula calculation. With that, they actually have an equalization formula in there. That equalization formula is where we actually lost a good portion of our CD this year. Again, we did see a rise in our special ed categorical weight since that is based off of our current enrollment. Any fellows in that?
Can I restate just to make sure that I understand?
Absolutely.
I feel like we missed a couple of times.
Yes.
The other time. Okay, so it is, now that's what you're saying is that the state has figured out how much, like for one, the state figured out how much we should be spending on our.
Total.
On our total. And even though, all right, so then within that, they figured out how much we ought to be contributing locally to like the big category.
As local fair share.
Category, not special.
Equalization.
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 Okay, so then even though the total dollar amount we received from the state this year is similar to what we received last year, it's gone down in equalization, it's gone up in special education. So in the past, we were kind of covering the extra special education costs that we really did have the state didn't recognize if they weren't looking at the current data. And now instead we're recovering equalization, essentially that the pot of money. So we end up somewhat equal, but are we, are we, I mean, is the total pot for equalization higher?
So what they're saying is that's too much.
Should we be spending more money here?
They're, they're looking at it for every part of the CD and formula is a weighted average based off of where your enrollment is.
Right.
So each child, based off of grade level, gets a weighted average component assessed to that. And then if there are any extras that they need, then there's an additional weighted average built into that. And so as they decided, so what they're doing right now is, Rutgers is assisting them on working on a new formula, they're working, meeting on it monthly. One of the things that they determined is that instead of looking and utilizing old data, ten-year-old data, now they're going to be utilizing the three-year average. With that three-year average, then they calculated everyone, the hardest component of looking at this too is that they view things, they'll use the term relative. But they don't tell us what that relative formula is equivalent to. So we all, right, so it makes, now you have formulas upon formulas, right? And now you kind of understand why other districts requested the state to release their formula calculation because as we're trying to forecast future years, it's very challenging for us to know where our categories may or may not end up.
So, so, so we don't really know, like what, what changed? Did something substantively change about our district?
Well, they took away adjusted aid from all the districts. And so they still have, right, a pot of money and then they take that pot of money and they back end it into the formula and then they separate it out amongst the categories that they have. They're also required in certain categories, right? Like we still receive federal grants from IDA for our, so with that, they have to show their own maintenance of effort. And so with that, they have to show how many dollars they give into the districts in order to do that. So that's why there is a special ed categorical aid category. And so a lot of times if they're not showing their maintenance of effort in that area, they might increase that particular category so that they're meeting it so that we still get our federal dollars. But now another category might have less of a pot of money.
I guess I'm sure.
I know, and a lot of data.
So if, if they gave us essentially roughly the same amount as they did last year, which we did.
They did.
And we were planning to increase our local levy by, let's say, two percent. What about here made the state think we need an addition? I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, I'm figuring out. That we need an additional almost six million dollars spent.
So Monmouth, Monmouth County goes ahead and they look at everybody's tax assessments every single year. So there was a pilot program back in two thousand and thirteen.
Why does the budget need to be bigger?
It's not, well, what happens is that means your town wealth goes up every single year.
Richer.
But then you have.
But I realize.
But, but in, but in the state's eyes, the town is richer. And so when you look at that, right, every year, your town wealth is increasing. And so then.
It's in our share, but I meant, what, we're talking about the net gain of six million dollars on the whole.
Right, so we, we are.
Absent our enrollment growing tremendously, what, what?
The state believes that the towns can pay. No, they just realize that the town's wealth goes up so that they can actually contribute more money. But for us, we create the budget, we are still held to a two percent cap. So it doesn't matter what your wealth indicator is because you can only take last year's base and add two percent to it and we still have to balance the budget.
So I remember talking about this in the past where Ms. Case has said the state thinks that we have this much money just because of our income level and housing values, but they don't give us a way to get that money.
Oh, yeah.
So this is kind of their answer to that.
That's the tax incentive plan is the answer, not what they did to the CD.
Yeah, yeah, no, the, the, this tax incentive is their answer to. You've always told us that, you know, we tell you, you can afford this, but we have, you have no way of collecting that money, here's a way to collect that money.
But I mean, going back to, I know we don't like the term under adequacy, but like let's treat it as being, like let's just look at it for a sec. Are they saying that we're not spending an adequate amount of money per kid?
This will be the first year that we will qualify as under adequacy that we are.
But if we have the same, roughly the same number of kids as we did last year, how, how did that change in one year? That's what I don't understand.
Because they were looking at ten-year-old data and now they're looking at an average of the last three years.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, it was a way different picture.
Right, because they were looking at before everybody moved here, before we had a lot of special education people, so they finally recognized that it is twenty twenty-five this year and instead of twenty-ten. And that, that, okay, now I understand.
So.
So.
A million questions against that one. So the, the, just because our homes are increasing does not mean that our bottom line is increasing or at our, at our home.
Correct.
You know, let's face it, where most people with paycheck, paycheck, the homes in Madawan Aberdeen are astronomical. So the state is looking at that, but they're not looking at income.
Well, it's, they look at it at property wealth and income.
But wealth meaning, that's not what I have in my pocket.
No, they're not looking.
That is what people are reading.
They're also not assessing utilities, went up twenty-two percent for electric and seventeen percent for gas, where that health benefits are double digits, right? Or that, then that all plays back into transportation costs or food we need to eat or basics of living. And then all of that has to be absorbed into our operation budget at a two percent cap.
Thank you. So President's report, I'm kind of building upon this theme of trying to share as much as we can. As mentioned, we're required by law to provide our own efficient education for every student in our district and we have to keep within our budget. District can raise the tax cap by two percent as allowed by law despite expenses increasing at a faster rate, which we just heard about. Some of the largest expenditures that we have include those special education services. So the thing is that we have a really good reputation for providing great special education services. So people are actually looking at that when they're choosing where to live. So if they have a special needs child, they, they like to come to where those kids are going to get services and we have a good reputation for that. And one of the things that we now have for the last couple of years is a state-funded full-time preschool. So we have a way to have early intervention so we can minimize maybe spending on services and kids unless you get older. So we're catching the kids sooner and if they need services, we are providing them earlier so that there may be less of a need later if we can, you know, kind of mitigate those services. As well as a less need for kids to be sent out of district for services, which is also another expense and that would be for things that our district would not be able to provide. Our district is very similar to your household budget and we try to, kind of thinking about it in terms of a household budget, we sort of have three big categories. So this is what we definitely know is happening. So increases in electricity, fuel, all those things, salaries, benefits, then what we can predict. So again, those basic line items and the increases of those, increasing enrollment, we have some, you know, way to predict that, but not always. And then there's certain things that just pop up, like emergency repairs. And then sometimes we have substitutes that we don't, you know, all those teachers aren't entitled to PTO, so we have to cover for that as well. We've spent, just to speak to that, we have, you know, a good amount of staff here and they have entitled as part of their contract PTO. So this year, the district has had four thousand requests for substitutes in all areas, not even just teachers, that includes secretarial staff, everybody. And that's approximately around three million dollars to cover that, those substitutes. And then we're having trouble finding substitutes. So if you know anybody that wants a substitute, please have them look, we have some information on our social media channels for how to become a substitute. So we would love, you know, if you're looking to get back into work or if you're a mom and, or a dad who's fully, you know, mostly taking care of your family, but you want another choice of income, this is a great way to do it. And then we've also spent a lot on, just like, I brought this up a couple of meetings ago, just sewage repairs, like to our grinder because things get stuck in there that are flushed down the toilets, specifically fapes. And that costs us like thousands, I don't know, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands every, every time. I mean, that's happened more than once where we had to remove thirty to forty thousand dollars in sewage, in the grinder repair. And they found, how many hundred fapes? Couple hundred fapes, yeah, in there. So tell your kids, don't flush them down the toilet, please. And then as far as the staffing goes, in central office administrator positions, we have the fewest number that we've had in a long time. We actually reduced positions in central office administrations and because of that, our remaining administrators have had to take on additional state-required roles like overseeing our HIB, security specialists. We have an AI, a new position that the state wants us to have, which is like an AI coordinator type role. So all those things, a lot of those things require certification, so it's professional development. And just on top of the list of things that fall under their actual position, this is all above and beyond. And, you know, it's not like they're, this is something that needs to be done, it's, it's not a, you know, I'll volunteer for that. And to remain competitive with our teaching staff benefits and salaries, our starting salary next year is around fifty-eight thousand five hundred. And sixty-two percent of our certificated teaching staff makes more than eighty thousand a year. So, you know, it's just talking in numbers about funding the salaries and benefits. And we're always looking for ways to decrease costs and ways that don't impact students and find sources of revenue. So smaller school districts in the area actually pay this school district through the business office for services for things like payroll. And for that, we make around four hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue, so that helps us offset some of our costs. And we are doing a summer program this summer through the YMCA, so we'll be making a little bit of income that way. And then our summer theater program, which is extremely popular, we were running it as, at a deficit and we were able to get to a point where between registration fees and ticket sales, we're actually making a little bit of money off of it. So we're always looking for those things to save money, to spend wisely, and so we just want to be transparent about that. And that's the President's report, so we will go through the agenda of curriculum and instruction.
Thank you, good evening. We're going to begin this evening under critical instruction, we're asking the board to take action on a couple of items. We're recommending being to approve items under A, travel. B, other field trips that are listed on the bottom of page one, along with page two, and at the top of page three, those are action items for this evening. Not for action, but would be considered at the regular action meeting. Next we could be item B, along, or we recommend to the board to approve a partnership with Short District Advertising for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. I'll just take a moment to point to the board, look at partnership meetings. Short District Advertising is a corporation located in Monmouth Ocean Counties where they partner with school districts and they partner with local businesses where they sell sponsorship and ad space on school ground and school property. Where that profit then comes back to the school district as revenue. So they do certain things, I shared with the board several pictures of other school districts. So banners and signs around athletic field, these signage is on classes, if there's opportunities for gaming rights at stadiums and theaters, all those are different possibilities. So we're excited about the opportunity for this, has a lot of potential, has a lot of room to grow over the next couple of years. We're going to be one of the first, if approved, one of the first districts in Monmouth County, Popular Ocean County, so we're looking forward to this partnership. That could be critical instruction.
I have a motion and a second to accept the curriculum and instruction agenda. Any questions?
Mr. Lea, I just want to verify, so this would be a way for us to make money?
Yes.
So it would be advertising for businesses on our, whether it be at the high school or on our grounds? And then so it's actually money brought in and not spent?
Correct, completely. So the way, the way it works, this company does all the work for us, they go out, they list the businesses, they put a portfolio together that we have to offer in terms of sponsorship and selling space. The businesses are required to purchase this space, purchase the signage, artwork, design, that's all on the business as part of their investment. And then what they get returned is visibility in front of our school community. So there's no, there's no cost to us, the agency makes a small profit and then the rest of the revenue comes to us.
Great, and then lastly, who would make the, the final decision on what we are choosing to put out on our fields or whatnot? Who would make that decision?
So then there's really, there's three different levels in that process. The first one, we start here, there's a board policy that allows us to do and not allow us to do certain things in terms of keeping kids safe. So one is the board policy, two is short district advertising, they do some screenings, they have a pretty good sense of what works, what doesn't work at schools. And then ultimately, it's cabinet, so we make the final decisions in terms of what sponsor works the best for our district. And if it's not a good fit, if it's something that we don't want to see on campus, like, it's a doubt for us.
Great, I would just ask if we could just be part of that, you know, conversation and or in the loop of what we decide on, you know, before we move forward?
Yeah, yes, yes, and what we can do, so what, some of the pictures I've shared with the board. So the agency can actually mock up based on what our potential space would look like. And so they go out and finally they take a realtor and they would then mock up what the artwork would look like on our facility. We could share that with the board. So once we get to the point of, we found some partners, we developed a sponsorship for the look like, we do a car for the look like, then we can share. So you can actually see what it would look like.
Thank you. Is there any idea of approximately, well, part of like, have they said, oh, you could make up to this much per year or?
Yes, so year one, which is the year we're getting it started, about twenty thousand dollars. They would expect that to double in year two. They don't have a ceiling as far as how high it could go, but that, that's where it starts, so twenty thousand dollars per year.
And is it a yearly thing that businesses sign up for one year and then they contact with us?
Two years, so it's when, when a business decides a partner with us in Short District Advertising, it's a two-year sponsorship, which actually is very helpful to us because then when it comes to revenue and budget, we'll actually know a couple of years out how much we're going to generate in just two years.
I think this problem is obvious, but the spaces that we have then have already been named in honor of long-term staff members, community members, etc., but those, those will work.
Correct, no change.
Thank you.
Student services?
Under student services, we're asking the board to take action on two items. Item number one is bedside instruction for students listed. And item number two is tuition review for twenty-two, twenty-four, we have this on the agenda, that could be student services.
Can I have a motion and a second to accept the student services agenda?
A motion.
Come on, second. Any questions?
Thank you, we have personality, but we do have one action item that we're asking the board to take action on. Stat array change as listed for enacting transportation supervisor with a paid differential as listed. That is our action items. We have a resignation of a chemistry teacher as listed on page one of seven. We also have a new section B of lease or absences with some amendments as listed. Continues on to page two. And item C, we have an appointment as listed, which is an ongoing appointment that has been going from board meeting to board meeting programs. We have also extracurricular activities as listed in section two. On page three of seven, we have curriculum instruction, Title I literacy night, and family nights as listed. We have some TBDs there, which you'll see also for our summer extended, extended school year program, we have TBDs as well. Based on those postings, we're excited to get those filled in the upcoming month. Those postings go on to page four of seven as listed. Item number five, on page four, we have our credit recovery program for supervisors who will assist students who are doing credit recovery during the summer month. We also have a summer school, summer theater as listed, which there is. Unfortunately, we have a duplicate, if you see choreography, that's going to be corrected. We, item number seven, we have home instruction as listed. And on page six of seven, we have some college student observers who are going to be at the high school and at the middle school as listed. We also have a volunteer, item number ten, for a baseball coach, actually, yes, for, yep, for a baseball coach for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as listed. On page six, finally, we have the other, we have our HIB reports, we didn't have any to report on the last meeting, so we see zeros there. We have our high school graduation chaperones as listed, along with the dates of the ceremonies. On page seven of seven, we have high school nurses for graduation as listed, along with those for graduation chaperones, TBD. And we have middle school, school nurse as we have with high school. we have with high school for graduation. We have some school calendar revisions that revise graduation dates, and we have the ministry of the police as mentioned, I'm sorry, as listed, item number seven. And then we have a settlement agreement for veterans payback as listed, and we have one longevity adjustment for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six as listed. And then finally, we have some additional hours as listed in item number ten, that in personnel.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to accept the personnel. Call motion?
Second.
Any questions? I have a question. I feel like it's harder and harder to get higher level science, science and math teachers. Do we know anybody? I know that we're trying hard to recruit, you know, good people, and I just, I guess I'm hoping that we get applications to fill some of the positions, and just and plan for future, because I know there's science and math teachers that have been with the district for a while, unfortunately, as much as we'd love for them to stay forever, but we can't.
Yes, we, we're working on, we just had a job fair yesterday, doing so, and unfortunately, science teachers are at a premium. I've had another fair on Thursday today, one science teacher, I was a middle school certified science teacher on a call, but it's very difficult to find chemistry teachers as you just mentioned, but we are actively recruiting in reaching out to universities and some of their directors for undergraduate teaching programs to recruit, even at Mont University where I do some adjuncting and working with the mean there trying to recruit some folks, it's just, it's very, very difficult at this time.
Yeah, that's good to hear about working with the schools, because I know there's an example of just in our district of students kind of had a change of heart in their career home and landed here, and did a really great benefit to us, so that's always another option as well. Students who maybe weren't sure what they want to do and now feel like they're in a long career, this is a great opportunity to switch. Anything else for that? Okay. Policy?
Thank you. For the policy, we are asking the board to approve the second reading, adopt for the second reading, the promotion and retention policy, as well as the student smoking policy as listed. Both of those policies were discussed at our town ram last, I'm sorry, ram, last month. And that ends policies.
Can I have a motion and a second to accept the policy agenda? A motion, I'll second. Any questions? Ms. Case, finance case? Good evening. We are looking to take action on the tentative budget approval, that was spoken about tonight, that will also include healthcare costs, waiver that we need, use of bank account, maintenance reserve control, residency resume, travel is listed. A new thing that was required as a pledge here was that we need to approve all of our tuition costs, so that is listed in the chart. And then the third is approving our preschool expansion need as well as listed in the chart. That'll tend to our action items for this evening. As we go to the ram next week, we'll be looking to approve the monthly reports as well as payroll, accepting the treasurer's report, approving transfers, approving the belt list, wonderful, accepting three donations to the districts that we've grown for, and then our five evaluation calls for the month of February, and that will conclude by now. I have a motion and a second to approve the finance agenda? Call motion? I'll second. Any questions?
Ms. Case, can I just verify the tuition cost, that's money coming in?
Yes, these are anything for any students that would be coming into our share.
Okay.
Any other questions? Before we get to the rest of the meeting, I just wanted to get some updates from some of our committees. So we have a finance committee that's been looking, working very closely with the superintendent, the board secretary of business administrator, and the rest of the, our cabinet, assistant superintendent, and our director of personnel, and I just wanted to get an update from finance, and then we also have our town representative liaison, so we'll start with finance.
Good evening, everybody. Mrs. Scoly can't be here for us tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and have the update on her behalf on the finance committee. Can everybody hear me? Great. The finance committee met earlier this week in preparation for the upcoming budget presentation. We plan to give an update at each board meeting so that the community is informed throughout the process. At tonight's meeting, our board review and approval is the tentative fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Upon board approval, the budget will go up to the county superintendent's office for review and their approval. They will then share any feedback or changes, and we will continue to work through the overall budget details. The tentative date for the public hearing of the budget is Thursday, April twenty-four, at seven P.M. at Cambridge Park Elementary School. This date is pending county approval. At that meeting, we will present the budget to the public and get into the specific details of what is included as well as answer any questions. As we discussed at our last board meeting, we received our state aid numbers on February twenty-seventh. Total state aid for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is twenty-two point seven million dollars. This includes money for special education, security, preschool expansion, transportation, and equalization aid. While state aid is essentially flat, we are seeing increasing costs up to double digits in many cases for things like benefits, programming, utilities, and special education, both an increase in costs and anticipated enrollment for special education. In addition to this, we did see a significant Medicaid reduction for next year. All of these costs must be worked through in order to ensure that the budget is fiscally sound, meets student and staff needs, aligns with our strategic plan, and with the budget cap of two percent in mind. The central office team continues to take an in-depth look at bigger cost areas and ways that we can approach them differently to deliver on our goal of providing an exceptional academic standard in a safe and supportive environment where every student is able to maximize their unique potential. Thank you to Ms. Perez, Ms. Case, Mr. Leibman, and Dr. Walz for the detailed budget information being shared with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scoly. Mr. McGovern, you have updated your liaison with Aberdeen Township, if you could please give us an update.
Sure. Reach out to Joe Lottucci, gave him an update to share with the town council about our Ytime flyer, received email of that correspondence tag saying thank you, do agree with that information, also updated on our tentative budget, and also just opening up the conversation to as we go through our process, keeping them in the loop and talking with them about their process, because their projects need to develop around the same time, and we were both very open to the conversation over the next two weeks, we're going to go out, sit down in a cup of coffee and just exchange notes, so to speak.
Excellent. Thank you. So so far, we have, just so everybody knows, we have thirty-one families registered for our Ytime, it's a preschool program offered through the Y, but, I'm sorry, it's a summer school, so it's K through five, K through five, sorry, I keep mixing that up. K through five program through the Y to supplement the town recreation programs. It's a summer rec program, basically. So last year, there was, you know, a big demand, and they filled up quickly, and so this is something that I actually had a community member come to me and say, I don't know what to do now, because I, you know, wasn't able to make a lottery for Ytown, and depends on the town, sometimes you have to be a resident. And so I actually brought that idea to the central office administration, and they were extremely receptive, and they worked on it all year, and they were able to offer that extra opportunity. So that total is sixteen kids, so we still have twenty-nine seats, so, you know, it's, if you're looking for, I saw today a meme that said, the hunger games of summer rec has started for parents, because they're all trying to figure out where to put their kids, so maybe ought to be ever in your favor, so hopefully you'll get, you know, a seat in the program that you're wanting. Mrs. Scoly could not be here tonight, but I know that she basically shared the same information with her counterpart in Madawan, and so there, you know, both towns are very appreciative, and I feel like the information sharing has been stronger than ever, and we really hope that continues, because we like working together on these things. So I guess we go to public comment, or you have this easy first? Public comment, okay, public comment. The board recognizes the value of public comments on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to a three-minute duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it's not the board's intention to cycle comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face criminal liability to the party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their legal advisor.
Cindy Centaur, Aberdeen, I haven't been here in a while, so guys, quick question, did you guys approve the meeting for next year? What day is and times you guys are going to be meeting? It's just that you guys seem to meet on the same exact date and time that Aberdeen Township Council meets, and I have to constantly make the decision, am I going to the board meeting, which is incredibly important, or am I going to township council meeting, which is incredibly important? Like today is, they're showing the Aberdeen Township budget today, so I had to make the decision, am I going to go to council meeting and see the budget, or am I going to come to the board about it? So it's difficult to make that decision. So I just wish you guys would, I doubt I'm going to get them to change that, so hopefully you guys consider me continuing your deal.
That's a Mr. McGovern question. Thank you. So as far as board meetings, usually we don't look at that until May for the following year, and unfortunately, there's lots of conflicts, you know, in terms of what's going on in the community, but we really kind of try to base it on what's good for the board, because we need to have at least a forum here every, every meeting, so we will definitely take that into consideration. Mr. McGovern is going to speak to his counterpart, we'll do the same for Madawan, and we'll try to get everybody to a place where we don't have to step on each other for these meetings, because they are important, and we're really grateful for the people that come to them. I'm sure the town, you know, wants people to attend the meetings as well, so, thank you.
And then one quick thing, I don't know who's responsible, but I take the one thirty-three bus, and I get off in front of Lloyd Road, and where that bus stop is, you know, that field, I don't know if it's owned by the Board of Ed or the township, but when we were having the snow and ice storms, traction, and even the area like that like leads from Lloyd Road, like to cross the street, catch, like fairly dangerous. And I don't know if you guys are responsible for making sure no one dies on that spot, because really, it's very slippery, or is that the township's responsibility? Like it's the sidewalk that runs along the field, like, you know, Lloyd Road's there, you know, cakes are on Lloyd, on actual Lloyd, the sidewalk.
On the Lloyd, so it's relatively adjacent to where the field is.
Yes, like on your side, where Lloyd Road School is, there's that, that sidewalk, and the one thirty-three, I mean, a lot of people are taking, you know, going to New York City, and I mean, like, dangerous, almost falling, and that would be terrible if someone had a lawsuit. So I didn't know who was responsible, but I thought I would mention that it's never shoveled or be iced, and I don't know if it's yours, it might be the township, but I just thought I would mention it to you. Thank you.
Please help to the town, the fields are theirs, and so in front of the sidewalk, that's.
So the sidewalk in front of the fields is the town's.
Correct.
Okay, so I will let you know. Thank you.
I just want to make one quick comment. If I remember correctly, our board meetings for a million years that I've been there have always been Monday. We switch it from Mondays because of conflicts with other town meetings, so I don't know how that happened again, because I thought that's why we switched.
I wasn't too sure, I can't remember the cause of the switch, but.
There was, there was conflict though with one of the towns, so I don't know, maybe we could figure something out, because I, had I known Aberdeen was doing their budget tonight, maybe I would have gone there. But no, like, seriously, I mean, that's, that's important.
There are six board members that live in Aberdeen, so, yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Thurl, and I live in Aberdeen. I have three issues I'd like to discuss. First one is pick up and drop off at Cambridge Park School. As you know, the one-way direction has been changed, dropping off your children through that road, whatever the name of the road is, you know what I'm talking about, that long forest-looking road. Go, when you pick up your child at the end of the day, and you come into the parking lot and you're leaving, they direct you to go the opposite way. My question is, who is at that end, at the end of the road, making sure nobody goes down that road, because that would be a head-on crash? It says one way. It does not say, do not enter between the times of two P.M. to four P.M., whatever. So when they're telling me I need to go down that road, which I went the opposite way to drop my child off, you, you're trusting everybody who lives in the area to know which way to go. What if somebody just goes down that road, doesn't live in the area, doesn't know the, what's going on? That's going to be a head-on crash one day. And do not wait for that to happen before doing something, because I usually drop, park on court land to walk my child in and pick up my child, but I came early one day, so I was like, oh, I got a spot, good, let me get in the parking lot over here. But when I had to leave, I had to go down that road, they told me, don't go down that road, no, 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 you got to go down that road. Nobody's directing me into the road to make sure no incoming traffic is coming down that road. Change the signs, do something that says, do not enter between that time. That's the first thing, my first issue. Second issue, complaint, school lunches. My daughter, I make her really nice lunches every day, but she wants to get the whole wheat muffin, the muffin bag. Who eats a muffin for lunch? My child sees that and thinks it's okay to be eating muffins for lunch. She's begging me to get her school lunch, so I said, all right, I gave it to her, I was like, all right, maybe once a week I'll let her have it. Go online, I can't give cash, I have to use my credit card, and so it's like, all right, let me just start it out. I put ten dollars in. One eighty-five for transaction fees, why? Why I have to tip them for giving my daughter a muffin? I mean, come on, we have to change the nutritional values of what our children are getting and the fees. What if parents want to pay cash? Why can't we pay cash? I pay cash, I have credit cards, but when I can't pay cash to pay less, I will do it. You want to do everything possible to save money, so why am I, if I don't want to put twenty dollars in at a time, I just want to put ten, I have to be punished and pay all these extra fees every time I want to add money to the account? It's not acceptable, and it has to change. My third problem is that my daughter, you know, she does beautiful work, but she's bringing home a lot of Rexos. You want to save money in the budget, with the budget? Stop wasting money on all this paper, you're killing trees. Why can't the children have workbooks that they use in the classroom? Let my child bring it back and forth every day so I can see what she's doing. She's coming home with at least six papers a day. I, I just spent like five hours last night going through all these Rexos, and what am I going to keep, what am I not going to keep? And she had a workbook, and then at the end of the school year, she got to keep that workbook so much more needed than all that, having all that clutter in the house. And the last thing you need is clutter with two young kids in your house.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm done, I'm done, that was my third complaint. That was my third complaint. I think I said okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we can, we can address some of these here and then some of them we'll, we'll follow up with you directly.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information about the arrival of the council for Cambridge Park. As for the school lunches, we don't accept cash, but the one thing that'd be great is if you, whatever you'd like to load on, you can send a check right in with your daughter and they can apply it to the account. If that would help and then there's no transaction fee.
Okay, just give a check and who do I dress it to?
M.A.R.S.A. Cafeteria.
M.A.
R.S.A. Cafeteria. And then they'll be able to apply right to your doors and then you won't have to worry about any transaction fee.
Okay, that's good.
And then you're still able to utilize A-School so that you can always check the balances.
Okay, M.A.R.S.A. Cafeteria. Thank you.
Ms. Case, is there a transaction fee every single time you load on you?
Yes.
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 It's like $2 a teen cent a child, a, a transaction. It's like.
And it's a percentage, so you can't even like do.
I'm tipping more than I do at a restaurant.
So that, so I will say that that's across the board everywhere because I pay my daughter's rent for her apartment at school and for it to come directly out of my bank account, they charge me a fee. And it's higher if I use a credit card because I wanted points, but I'm not doing that. And it's even higher, I mean, there's all these different, so unfortunately, I think what's happening is, as you know, credit card companies have a fee and they're passing those transaction fees down. So I don't know that we can really rectify that. I don't, I mean, even our, we have a new provider, fairly recent, even the provider before had transaction fees.
Well, what is online too, if you choose to pay by check is, I, I found this out now, that's not online.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. We can make sure that information about avoiding the fee, you can pay with a check. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, the transaction processing fee goes to PaySchool Central. It doesn't go to Machados, who is the lunch provider. Okay, yeah. And I'm happy to know about that check option also.
Yes, and you, and you can, if you'd like, you can also attach a account to PaySchools and I believe it's a fixed amount as well. But again, it also is a service check.
Hi, I'm Mary Elizabeth Jermaine, Madawan. So I sent an email and we can take this offline if that's easier, with specific concerns about the condition of the high school bathrooms in particular. Oddly, my son is at that to graduate and this was the first time I was ever in the girls' bathroom in the high school. It was a couple of months ago during a wrestling match. And I was horrified at the condition. Missing tiles, missing things from the ceiling and just overall gross. It's a little bit embarrassing that that's what our kids have to use, as well as when other districts are coming in for, like it was districts or something for wrestling, so there were a bunch of other towns. So I don't, are there any plans to do capital improvements in the school? I mean, it's just like the environment that the kids sit in to learn in dictates how effective learning and teaching is. And it's just, it was a plate of falling for, and again, 17 years, well, not like 17 years in the district, but it took me that long to see it, but I was utterly shocked. I tried getting pictures, but then the bathrooms were locked during the school day, today as well, which is a whole other question.
I think Ms. Case and I will tag team the question. And we appreciate your concern and what you're sharing in terms of the conditions of the facilities. Part of the budget process is facilities. So it's facilities and operations, salaries as we were discussing. So as we're going through the budget, we are including repairs and improvements in that particular area. Unfortunately, due to funds, we just have a set pot of money, so not everything will be completed, but we are prioritizing facilities and initiative things to repair.
Okay, because from what I heard, what I saw is like the norm, at least in the high school. So again, I haven't toured, I don't know everyone. And then my other question related to budget is my son is taking ceramics this year for his art requirement. They've run out of clay, so it's turned into an art history class. And the clay is $65 for 50 pounds. That would get them through the end of the year. And again, I was just shocked to hear that the district can't afford $65 worth of clay.
Sure, I'm, I'm going to kind of tag team with facilities as well. So every three years, we have to go through a process called CUSAC where the state comes out and they analyze our facilities, tell, you know, tell us what they like, what they don't like. We are in the process of that. Part of what we did for the high school over the past few years is that, I guess for 20 years, there were no doors on the bathrooms. So last year, we went to putting all the doors on the middle school and high school bathrooms that did not have it. They weren't anywhere in the building because they had been gone for so long. So we made that improvement. We've been kind of going through different bathrooms. There's definitely, we agree with you, there is rust on the partitions, there's, you know, old tile, there's missing tile. We agree with everything that you're saying. As we're walking through too, there's a lot of concrete work, whether that is, you know, sidewalk repair or, or just pathways through areas that we need to be able to go to. So all of that has been, you know, part of what we're trying to build into the budget so that we're able to utilize that and start correcting those. We also know that we need to update our long-range facilities plan, so we're working with our architects and what they can walk through, take pictures, give us conservative numbers so that we have an estimate of what repairs would be. Part of our buildings, you know, every single roof that we have throughout the district is 15, had a 15-year warranty, they're all expired. So we do not have one roof throughout the district with a warranty on it. If we were to get a warranty now, it would be a 20- or 30-year warranty, so that kind of identifies how old the roofs are throughout the district. So we did take the opportunity through the state to apply for broad grants, which we did get approval on so that they can help us so that for, for whatever the project cost is, they will provide us 40% back. So we're kind of working on those next steps so we can take those. So we really are trying to prioritize facilities so that, you know, we're, we're kind of taking off a little bit in every single building so that we're starting to see improvements everywhere and not necessarily just in one building. And then, you know, with that, try to also utilize any grants or resources that we can so that we can make improvements. But one of the major things that we're going to have to work on is roof repairs first. We don't want to, you know, make a beautiful kitchen, but then have a roof leak. So with that being said, and then for the clay aspect.
So can I just ask one question on the facility thing? So when the state walks through this CUSAC, whatever, that's like basically their inspection, bathrooms with missing tiles and rust are passing?
They, they are, they were brought out and they were identified and they are, you know, telling us, no, we need to fix them. So you will see that as we are repairing or replacing tiles, we're trying to get them as close to the color as we can, but they may not be.
You can also pick the ones that are, that are like break, you should pick.
Yes.
And you did share, I think you were the one that actually sent me the, the budget breakdown. What do you do, like I noticed there were a couple of different reserve categories. Are you using any of those funds for these types of improvements?
We have, and, and even tonight, when you see the tentative resolution, it would be the maintenance reserve withdrawal.
Oh, the clay. I'm also stupid asking about $65 clay, but it just like, it was right after the bathroom.
Of course, we spent over $12,000 on clay throughout the district just for the high school. While we were actually walking through CUSAC, they were actually doing clay projects, clay abundance to build into the county. So we referred to that. And one of the things that they did is we asked them to talk to their counterparts, right? We have more than one building, so maybe one exonsidet and another building does have it, so, so they did help each other out.
Okay.
So we're just trying to make sure that when we're being responsible, that they can't just continuously buy all the, all the supplies and, you know, each department has a set budget and we're trying to have them allocate those resources to these then. Obviously, if more are needed or if we notice that there's higher enrollment in there and they need to do more, then absolutely, but at the same time, they have to manage the resources that they have in the classroom and also reach out to your counterparts. We have other buildings with supplies. Maybe there's not use of utilizing as many and that we can help out. So they did receive some from the middle school so that they will get the remainder of the year.
It was the teacher that actually said it's $65 is what they need to buy. I had, like, I almost ordered the clay.
I just wanted to add though, in terms of that particular class, that what happens is this place, we're going through the budget, they're allocating and they're putting in a course, say for $10,000 for clay, and that's the money, that's, you know, that's the money that we'll order for, and probably for the middle schools in September. What happens between now, February and September is a lot, which includes enrollment numbers in some of those courses. So enrollment went up in those particular, in that particular class. So it is, you know, I could see how they may have run out of clay.
And I realize asking about clay sounds so silly, but I feel like it's like a microcosm of larger things going on. Like if we can't supply clay, where are we having other issues from a supplies perspective?
And what they make in there is beautiful. We were like.
I haven't seen anything over here, so I actually don't know what they make.
There's a lot there, so great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to add that that inspection was last week. So the, the, when you're saying to the past, we were just finding, I mean, it literally just happened, so we're just getting like the final.
We actually have three more buildings to walk through, but this, this county office takes a little bit of a break because they're going to kind of redirect their position and focus on budgets for this one. And then they'll come back, so we have our second round of CUSAC walk-throughs for different buildings at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Case, just a quick, so when CUSAC is in the building, if they see things like this, it's like a point structure, right? That we would lose points. So at the end of, of the inspection, like you're supposed to need a certain amount of points and as you're going through, you're going to work through them.
And not, the CUSAC was also why teachers had to remove everything from their classrooms that they, that was a big topic of conversation too. But that was the same thing.
Yes, I actually would like Ms. Case, maybe it was for us to speak to that because, you know, there was some, some buzz out there about that. And once the actual list of what's not allowed was posted, all of a sudden, the buzz disappeared. So I, I do want Ms. Case to talk about why those things are not allowed. So we have what are called health and safety checklists and we're required to walk the building annually and then we're required to report those structures back to the state. So with that, when we go through CUSAC every three years, we give the principals a list pretty much, I think it's page 21 through 29. And it kind of delineates, you know, what's allowed in the classroom, what's not allowed in the classroom and that, can we please start working on that, you know, with all of your teachers and so that we can have the proper things in the classroom and not the proper things, right? And so what are some of those things? So as much as we love garland and decorating the rooms, the, the state views that as a choking hazard, so we can't have those things. Signs with strings, again, they view that as a choking hazard, so we can't have those. We cannot have things dangling from the ceiling. We do not have the windows covered with any pictures at all. We can have them on the doors, we can have them on the walls. Again, there is a review on the walls, you can only have 25% of your walls covered, you cannot have any more than that. So we, we did have a lot of rooms with a lot more than 25% covered. So we kind of talked about that, you know, like we love seeing the artwork or we love seeing the reports, so, you know, sure, have your student class work around, but maybe some of the inspirational posters, we can kind of, you know, press out or make sure that the windows are, you know, open and there's nothing on them. Or we have the H-backhandings in the classrooms, make sure that we're not, you know, covering the returns, make sure that the furniture isn't as close to those returns, right? So that those systems can work properly. When you're walking through a door, you need 36 inches around that door, so making sure that the furniture or the desks or where the students sit are not, you know, obstructing that so that, God forbid, there's an emergency, that they have a proper way to evacuate, making sure that the evacuation sign is at the height of the student so that they know where to go, God forbid there is an emergency. So those are kind of all the ones. Yes, we can block out, we can have, everybody cannot have a cure for refrigerator and microwave. There has to be designated set faculty room for those safety features, you know, hot plates and things like that in the classroom. The other thing then comes back to is furniture. The furniture has to be school purchased and it has to be from vendors that we're allowed to purchase from. And the reason for that is because, God forbid, we did have a fire in the building, furniture that you have at home ignites much faster than the furniture that we're purchasing. There's things on it to prevent or stop the fire. And so those things kind of had to go home or go, go back to where they were. We love the projects that the kids do with the rocking chairs and setting them up, but we can't keep every single thing that the students create. And so some of the painter things, again, create a little bit of a fire hazard, so those would need to go home. Kind of just, not, not so much things that, home furniture wise, school. For a lot of the rugs, we are thrilled that the teachers are spending their money and bringing things in. But we have to make sure that the rugs that are being purchased have the proper compliance to it and some of them don't, unfortunately. We can't really utilize Amazon. There's a lot of third-party or overseas vendors and we're not allowed as procurement rules to work with them. So it kind of prevents where we use. So we've been making sure like, these are the vendors that we need to utilize, these are why we need to utilize them. And, you know, let us take care of the purchase so that everything that's in the classroom stays in the classroom and that you can use it year after year after year. Any other thoughts that I missed? No, that was great. I appreciate that. Maybe, and I'm assuming that this happens and maybe it's like all the stuff that we get to as parents to just read and sign and we just sign up because we want to move on with our day, they probably get a list of, wow, what happened in the year. Any other questions? Is everybody who has, would like to speak, want to spoken? Okay?
Cindy Santora, Aberdeen. So the second time I'm up here is I want to talk, because I know I haven't been here a bit because I've actually been doing the council meetings. And I'm very concerned about the low-income housing that we have to do. And I'm not concerned because of low-income housing, but if you look at how it's written, their incentives are built in for the builders. So 20% has to be low income, but 80% is not because the builders have to make money. So I mean, I don't know if you guys have been paying attention to any of this. And today Aberdeen is voting on changing the zoning of an area into more residential housing. So, I mean, like they're obviously doing that because they're going to be building more, which I know is going to affect us. So I know you guys talked about some kind of planning you were doing, study? Did you guys do that? Cause I missed, as I said, I've been doing a lot of council meetings with, so I haven't been here. So did you guys release the information on that study?
It's, it's not complete yet, but they're still collecting. We're, we're working with the towns because there's, there's certain information that the towns have to provide. So with that collaboration, but it's not completed yet. So we're hoping that by the close of the year, we'll receive it. It's a study, unfortunately, that takes almost 18 hours.
So you're expecting to get answers this year?
I hope by the end of the year.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are all aware about this low-income housing thing. I'm not sure if you're, like, if it's even on your radar, but it really, it's, it's so much more than low-income housing because it's going to give a huge influx of apartments. I mean, we're talking about low-income housing, it's going to be for families, we're not talking about one bedrooms. We're talking about multi-bedrooms.
Can you, the, the rezoning, I'm just curious, is that Bank of America, where is that located?
It's going to be over by Glassworks.
No, you're talking about the.
They're doing a rezoning of an area where they're trying to get into residential.
And that's over by Glassworks?
It's going to be over by Glassworks.
In addition to Glassworks?
Yes, that's what, that's what it looks like. As I said, it's going on today and I just read the agenda. So I'm just going by default with the agenda. I don't want to get false information. I'm obviously not there, I'm going to be watching the video later that Bishop posts. So I'm 100% sure, but I know that that's something that's happening today, but I'm a little concerned about the, the low-income housing because again, about another 250, 300 apartments being built, it's definitely going to put a strain on the, the board. And you guys are already talking about budget issues and you can't raise your budget more than 2%. That would be very concerning to me. So I just wanted to mention it, make sure I didn't miss that study that you guys were talking about doing.
Yeah, we'll hopefully have it in the year. So that's part of the planning process that the central office team is trying to project out in long. The demographer, correct me if I'm wrong, is so that we can plan out long, like this, long-term new development that would have a. long-term new development that would have a, like, all-in-one impact, right, so that, it could, depending on what the makeup of the population is. So year-to-year enrollment is always part of the, you know, we're, they're looking at who we have coming in, and that, some of that can be estimated. And sometimes we have a small, like, our graduating class this year is one of the biggest we've ever had. We are projecting right now that the incoming class is a little bit smaller or like more on target, so that there are fluctuations, but in terms of this type of, you know, like rezoning, it is, it could potentially be a bunch of new students at one time, so that's one of the reasons why we would go for a demographer, to really look at what's going on with building in the towns that we can project out in future years, like, could there be an influx all at once?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that, I'm just gonna go and talk to the town about the low-income housing and what our plans are and how many units they're expecting because it's not just twenty percent, it's, it's gonna be a lot, a lot more than that. Thank you.
You should remember, did you be able to reach out and communicate that a little bit more?
Hey, did you tell the comment board?
I didn't want to go down the rabbit hole with the demographer study, but I did, like, I know, unless I'm very wrong, that that is one of the limitations, is that the demographer's looking at the current zoning, and people, and the absence seals that build out within what is permitted in that current zoning. If something was rezoned, especially from commercial or residential, that is, I mean, there's, you can't know something before you know something. And so that does complicate trying to project anything all, I mean, unless you somehow get another, like, option C, when the entire town is unresidential, like, they, you know, otherwise it's, it's going to be, there's only so much to do. Any new business or old business?
I did have a couple of questions. I just, because I feel like the longer I'm involved in the questions I have, I start to understand more and more. As far as the phenomenal program Keys we have, we talked about funding tonight. How are we, how is it normally funded and how has it changed?
So when the program started, Keys was funded by a grant by the state, as they have been unable to match the revenues year after year. This is the first year that we are requiring tuition, and so that's why I was informed to make sure that we approve a special added rate for the plan, and so we're already projecting what students will be coming into the plan for next year as we build the budget for Keys.
How does it work? How does it work for students who are already in our district? We, we took Keys, so is that.
There's no charge.
But we still have to, as a district, fund it, definitely. How do they go if they're free?
They're not, they don't, that's a. It, because we're writing the program, it's absorbed in the cost. By the grant, by the grant funding that we receive from the state.
So the grant funding covers a certain amount, and then we're, we created tuition to supplement with whatever else we need, and it's not actually based necessarily on cost overall, it's after the grant?
We built the costs last year based off of how much the program takes to run. We're lucky enough to have it on Brookdale's campus, and Brookdale doesn't charge us all these fees, so that keeps the cost down. It also gives them, right, the great ability to be on a secondary campus, so we're thrilled with that. So that's helped us with costs. The woman who runs the program is extremely resourceful and gets a ton of grants, so, and there's also donations and all that, so that participates into the total cost of the budget. And so there have also been other unique opportunities where, when students are coming in, that they're also receiving grants to assist and pay their tuition for, which is helping us overall with the program and the cost.
So the program is a whole thing, so I have said, I worked in one of the events there. It is one of the most incredible programs I've ever seen. I guess, so it, it is not pulling on our budget at all from the district?
No, no. So, so I just wanna go back, so the first year that we opened, it was one point one million dollars that we received. Then it went down to five hundred thousand in most recent years, and then we had a lot of support for some, from some of our legislators who also gave us capital, capital funds as well, so that was able to support the program. It was, this year was the first year that we charged tuition, we did not need to do that. It was at the recommendation of working with the county because we were seeing that there was a decline in, in the support in the budget that's coming out. Like I mentioned earlier, it was really. So that's helping for, to keep the program running. So while districts may, and we work out, we're pretty creative in terms of helping the other districts be able to afford it. So Ms. Case is saying in terms of grants, there's grants that each town, for example, has received from the local authority. It may have gone to the state police, it may have gone to your town police department. We, they're, we're able to kind of coordinate with that, not myself, but the, the principal and the, the district, so to help fund and support the student.
I didn't have a second.
Oh, yeah, question. Sorry. If this, if this new budget business, we have to vote on each other's, I forgot.
Is it business? It's something that you mentioned earlier.
Yes, if it's, if it's in here, then we can talk about it.
I'll say and you'll tell me.
Okay.
You talked about the number of paid time off that the staff has taken and is in for, I was just wondering, compared to speaking other public districts, if we know, 'cause the number sounds like a lot, and I'm just wondering if it's similar to others.
We don't have that yet. But, I mean, they have, it's, it's part of, it's part of the, I mean, unfortunately or fortunately, everyone, look at it, some of that was, like, we, we were required to do that.
Oh, absolutely. It just was presented in the article as money that we were putting out, so I was just curious how it was in comparison to other school districts that were similar, and I wonder if we have access to that information.
Well, I saw online some, I forgot what school district it is.
Give the, approach the podium and. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I saw online that some schools, they're doing something where like if the teachers, let's say they're present the entire month, they get incentive, they get maybe a hundred-dollar bonus or something.
Yes.
If you do that, it might go a long way.
We do, we have that in our calendar.
Oh, you did?
Yes. And some, and some staff do receive the incentive.
Okay, that's good to know, maybe you have to increase it.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Are you gonna just ask a question of the advertisers? I know, I know that, so we're vetting the companies, correct, before we make a contract with them?
Yes.
Okay. And you're doing the vetting of the companies, or the company that we're hiring is doing the vetting of the companies? Does. It seems both?
We're doing it in conjunction with short districts advertising.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure that we're making sure on every level that these companies that we're gonna put on our property, wherever we're advertising, you know, there's, they're proper and they belong on, you know, school grounds.
Correct.
Okay.
So just to add onto that, I did ask Ms. James, like, what kind of it? Advertising, I think a lot of this is, like, really state-related. Maybe account these things.
Other fields, hospitals.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna take a vote on the agenda.
Sorry.
We're gonna vote on the agenda. So a motion in the second to set the full agenda or? That's a hundred percent. Who's our governor? On the agenda items?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Monto? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Gura?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Marippe?
Yes.
Now, any final thoughts? New business or old business?
I have one more comment about the Beagle Juice Junior play at the middle school was, seems like forever ago, I think it was two weeks ago. It was awesome. Everybody, the kids did such an amazing job, it was so delightful to watch, and I just commend everybody behind the scenes and the students, 'cause it was phenomenal, so the job.
And I feel so bad, I wanna make sure I also mention that I went to the high school that had the arts, that we didn't have to go, and it also was absolutely phenomenal to see all kinds of arts, you can have clay, yeah, ceramics everywhere, and we also had students performing, which was amazing, and then we had professional student artists with their wares. And we saw people, it was cash, I was like, do you have cash? Do you have cash? It was just phenomenal, everybody, which way, I'm just so proud of the talents of our students and that they had an opportunity like that to showcase them. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think with that, we will conclude the meeting. I just wanna say, I wanna thank everybody, the board members, because we are not on page, we do this on our own time, because we really wanna have an impact in the students of the district, and they put a lot of work into reviewing the budget, and we've been asking questions and trying to get as much information as possible, and the central office team has been really great about giving us everything we need, so I just wanna thank everybody for just being diligent and asking questions and, you know, helping everybody do their job and serve our students. Yeah, we are. We are entering into a second executive session. We have resolved that a closed session can be believed for the purpose of discussing privacy, personal matters, and legal services. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when a reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately thirty minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene, and the secret business action will not take place. Can I have a motion on the second for section seven?
I'll motion.
I'll send.